We'll go ahead and get started with our regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight, Commissioner Richardson in Kentucky at a funeral, his mother-in-law passed away. So we'll keep him and those family in our prayers and our thoughts. But tonight I've asked Commissioner Fleming to open us with the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come tonight in your name, thanking you for all your blessings. Thank you for portion of life, health, and strength. Thank you for the angels that watched over and protect us all last night. Thank you when the road to blow was still running on in our vein. We thank you for how you brought us, how you blessed us. We pray tonight that you be with the commissioners, myself tonight. Give us strength as we do your will, conduct the county business. We pray that you look on the Richardson family tonight in their time of bereavement. Look over our country, look on the commanding chief, look on America. Father, we love you, God, we thank you, and we pray and we trust in your holy name. Father, we ask these blessings in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is approval of amendments from October 15th. Regular scheduled board meeting and October 21st, special call meeting. Have any changes, corrections, additions? Hear none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved, second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda, have two through 14. We're gonna pull 15 for a quick discussion, and 16 and 18. Any others wishing to be pulled? Hear none, I need a motion to approve two through 14 and 16, 17, 18.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stapleton, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, item 15, authorization to purchase property in the amount of $84,656 from US-129 for a fire station, budgeted item. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a correction on the sale price. The sale price is actually $92,640.33, and that's due to adjustment in the easement that's coming into the property. It still fits within our budget.
Ninety-two what?
Ninety-two thousand, six hundred, forty dollars, thirty-three cents.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
Eleven point one-four. Eleven point one-four. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I second.
A motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. All right, moving on to time specific, at 6:05 PM or soon thereafter, if the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution or special permit, SP 191101, by Latasha Graham, to be granted a special permit under section 4.4.5B Swanee County Land Development Regulations. This time, if you'll, anybody needing to be, wishing to speak, they'd stand up and be sworn in.
If no one from the audience out there, how about the applicants? Just in case. All right? Did each of you raise your hand? Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. When you, if and when you do come up, go ahead and state your full name and address for the record, okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have for your consideration is a special permit request number SP 19-11-01. The applicant is Latasha Graham. She's requested a special permit for, the land development regulations uses the term residential home for the aged. We refer to it a lot as an assisted living facility. The subject property is located in the Swanee Ranchette subdivision on Lot 75 of Section D. This lot is a five-acre parcel. Access for the property is off of 230th Terrace, which is a county graded road. Single-family residential home that's located on the property is 1,884 square feet in size. With the state guidelines for the home and what she's requesting, she would have a limit of her occupants of six tenants that would be there, or occupants. They would be provided with things, minor medical, overseas assistance with laundry and things like that, share common kitchen facilities, but have their own bedroom facilities that would be provided for in the residential home. Ms. Graham has already been dealing with Mr. Tim White, our county fire marshal, and Patrick Taylor, the building official, about what modifications would have to be made to the facility in order to render it to be used for the assisted living facility. I think Mr. White has already done an inspection for some of the fire issues that would be required for fire alarms, and I know that Patrick's had some conversations with her about the handicap accessibility issues for the bathroom facilities that would be located at on-site. If the board were to approve the special permit and adopt the resolution, then, you know, she would still get her certificate of occupancy for the change of occupancy from the single-family residential home, what it is, to the assisted living facility. It's kind of a similar process we had done several years ago on a site that was located on 129 South for an assisted living facility, and this is just kind of a similar type request. Ms. Graham is present to answer any questions that the board has in regard to her operation. She may be a little nervous, but she's here nonetheless. But that's about all I have to add, and this time I would enter the file into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. We'll take the file in, including the appropriate application as composite exhibit number one.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Meeks?
I may have a question to Ms. Graham.
All right.
May, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is living in the Ranchettes, that mean that you'll be living there with individuals, with the people, or you have someone there, staff on board all the time?
Yes, sir, we'll be staffed there at all times.
And Ms. Graham, if you would, please identify yourself by name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm Latasha Graham.
Address?
Address is 3534, 230th Terrace, Lake City 32024.
Okay, so that mean you'll be living there, you have someone there?
Yes, sir, at all times.
Okay.
Any other questions for? Anyone else from the board have any question?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so how many staff do you think you'll have total?
Four.
Four? All right, and how many people, residents, would be there?
Six.
Six, okay.
Yes, sir.
He may have said that, I was reading, I apologize. Thank you.
I don't have anything, Mr. Stapleton, you got anything for?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, they're waiting their way to the podium. If you weren't sworn in, would need to be sworn in now. Seeing none, at this time we'll close public comment. Any discussion from the board, or any motion to approve?
Chairman, I have a motion to approve.
That's second.
You got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes 4-0. At this time, we'll close public hearing. Thank you. All right, moving on to staff. Moving on to staff reports, Greg Scotts, Park and Rec Director, Airport Manager, Janitor, what else?
All righty. Just want to let you know that we will be wrapping up football, and I wish that Mr. Meeks hadn't left yet, but his team was undefeated and unscored on, so he must have got some ringers, because it couldn't be the coaching, so.
Well, he, he owes us a thank you for letting him out here early enough that night to get his, uh...
Get his draft.
Get his draft done.
Right, that's right.
Yep.
But anyway, we'll wrap up that on the, it's already wrapped up, we ended last, oh, yesterday, Monday.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did you inform Mr. Scott he gets three minutes?
Three minutes per job responsibility?
I think he was out of town that week that we come up with a different...
Depends on how many questions you ask.
Or interruptions.
We've got basketball, wrapped up the basketball registration the other day, and we start on Thursday with the, well, we start actually draft tonight. We've got soccer registration going on now, and been busy, they've been rolling in this week already for soccer, so that's been pretty busy so far. Want to bring you up today on some, some things with the Douglas Center. We wrote two grants, as you recall, for the FORDAP program, two $50,000 grants. We've been informed by DEP that the new attorney is revisiting the rules and saying that we can only apply for one for that property at a time. We have expressed our...
Dismay.
Yes. That we, our interpretation, their interpretation is different, and we're not giving up yet, so, but we will be working toward that. Additionally, if you all recall, the soccer facility, we abandoned that property and asked for DEP to give us permission to transfer the elements to the, to Douglas there. They have verbally granted that, we still have not got the document yet from DEP, so we don't want to start work until that's done, to make sure we're following all the rules. Generally, if we're having to spend any money, we're not going to be able to, until we sign the document, we're not going to be able to proceed. We also in the process of developing a master plan with the, with the grants that we are working on, and, and some listening to the community about some things that they wish to see. We had a meeting today with a gentleman that once put on a, a Black History event. Mr. Fleming brought, brought him in and had a great conversation with him, and the event will be February 8th, and looking forward to that event, should be a good, good thing for the community. We are opening the roof bids for the Coliseum, the, not the Coliseum, but the arena extension yesterday. Those bids came in, in, within the budget, and we'll be sitting down Thursday and doing a budget review with the engineers to make sure everything meets what it should. The, we've also met with, or will be meeting next couple of days with Water Management District about Peacock Lake project. Been working on that for a number of years. Finally, the game of fish folks found it on their, under their desk somewhere, the application where they awarded that a while back, so we should be able to move forward on that in the next, you know, several months. The, um, as you're aware, y'all approved tonight, us working with the, with Duke Energy to come up with an agreement for the, the train trestle, working with Columbia County to, to have the Swanee River Greenway match the Alino Trail down at the Shuttney River. Right now, the, just for the public that didn't get all the information, right now the bicyclist or using the trail has to walk onto 27, cross the bridge, which is a narrow bridge, and then get back on the trail. So DOT looks favorable in this project, we think we can get some grant funds to make that happen. And additionally, we're in, in that same meeting, we were talking, it looks like the chances of getting some Sun, not Sunpass, Sun Trail money to make improvements on the old trail from the Shuttney back toward Bramford, it looks very favorable. We've got some real issues there with potholes and, and things, and we look, looks very favorable to get some money for there in the next year or two. We, we'll be installing the fencing around the McAlpin basketball court this week, or we think this week. Everything changes depending on what, what phone call you get, but that's, the game plan is to install that this week. We got the fencing in a couple of weeks ago and ready to move with that. We helped the city with the Candy Carnival, and it seemed to be a very big success, glad to be a part of that. And over the last weekend, we found out we had some vandalism down at Little River Springs, was proud of the staff, we went there that afternoon and surveyed the damages, closed it up. Appreciate the sheriff and, and his support in, in helping us write up reports. The, we got it cleaned up by two o'clock on the next day, and pressure washing, it was quite a, quite a mess. Got a few more things that we tweaked a couple of days later, but it's back up and running, and everything looks good. We're also working on internally, and we'll get those to Randy when we get those complete, some new job descriptions, updating those, trying to do some succession planning, making sure we're ready for the next probably five years, probably four or five different people is going to be retiring, so we need to have things in place, the job descriptions mainly, and then getting things ready for that transition. Regarding the airport, we're averaging a little over 2,300 gallons per month in fuel cells. We did a pre-bid meeting for Jet A and also the new bulk hangar last week, and the new Pappy Light's been installed and been certified by FAA. The EAA had their annual pig roast on the 26th, appreciate Lynn and Buddy and the crew for going out there and cooking for them. This weekend, we've got a, the first power parachute event. We should have about 150 power parachutes coming into town. Hopefully, they'll spend their money and go home, or if they want to buy property, they can stay. But, but anyway, the, it should be a really good event, the guy who puts that on is doing a nice job, we're getting people from all over the country coming in to get trained in how to do that sport. I tried to offer Nathan to get up there and be a guinea pig, but he said no. I said, anyway, you want to, if you want to get higher in the, in the organization, you got to get in this, in this thing, so he's debating that. So, but any questions that I could answer for anybody?
I got, I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Some of you may already know the answer to this, but what's the update on that, the dock that burned out there?
It's Game of Fish, I've not heard any, any updates from Game of Fish on that.
Is it something that we're going to be responsible for rebuilding, or?
No. This is a Game of Fish property, so they will be responsible.
Okay.
We certainly could if you'd like to, but it wasn't in my radar.
Not in your budget this year?
No.
They've asked a couple of times for us to take responsibility for that part of it.
Right. And we, we have over the years tried to assist them, to help our citizens have better access.
Right.
And Randy's done some things with Millings and different things, and, you know, trying to help it for the citizens, it's not to bail out state agencies, but, but, and I can follow up with, with them and see what their timeline is and follow up with you.
The only other thing I had is, I was just going to tell you, I appreciate your perseverance with the Douglas Center and, and following up and making things happen. I know, I speak for this board and Mr. Fleming, that it's something that we're all passionate about, want to see it happen, and Mr. Ford's here tonight, and he's been a big influence on it, and we, it's our intent to follow through, Mr. Ford. It's, uh, it's not something that we want to see get, fall by the wayside by any means, so.
Right.
Some of this is just slow process, but we stay on top of it, and I know you're doing a good job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. In the meeting we had back with DOT, there was actually one of the commissioners from Columbia County in that meeting, when we were talking about the trail and the bridge. It's interesting, can I say this the right way, that I explained, and, and the people from Columbia County explained, grant process doesn't happen yesterday. There's a long process that has to take place before you can get, start turning dirt. And a lot of times when, when commissioners get elected, they think things happen this quick, and they don't. Great projects, but, but I'm really pleased with what the, the board has done to set aside some funds, and also doing the transfer from soccer, and get us lined up, ready to move whenever those things come loose. And it's exciting, it can be an exciting project, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Before you go somewhere?
Hey, before you go, Mr. Scott, just for the board and the public information, we had a Douglas alumni reunion on October the 11th through the 13th, and it was held at the Coliseum and at the Douglas Center Pavilion, and it was a real success. We had over 200 alumni to come in, of the 200, uh, 200 alumni to attend, and probably 150 was from out of town. And it probably had a small economic impact to the community, because a lot, some stayed in the hotels, and they, you know, was around town and leaving money, as Mr. Scott usually, you know, say, so it was a success. And I just want to thank Commissioner Fleming, coordinating with him, and through the support that we got from Parks and Recreation. So the Alumni Board got together, and we wanted to present Parks and Recreation with a certificate of appreciation, and I would like to read it and present it to Mr. Scott on behalf, you know, for him to pass it on to the staff at Parks and Recreation. It says the Douglas Alumni Association, a certificate of appreciation to Swanee County Parks and Rec. The Douglas High School Alumni Association is proud to present this certificate of appreciation to Parks and Recreation for the outstanding support they provided during the ninth Douglas Alumni Reunion, October the 13th, October 11th through the 13th, 2019. There were well over 200 alumni to attend the reunion at the Coliseum at the Douglas Gymnasium Pavilion area. Responding to numerous requests during the preparation for the three-day event can be merely described as nothing less than outstanding. The sentiment from the attendees was this was one of the best alumni of the previous reunion, and this can be contributed to the support provided by Parks and Recreation. For their contribution, we offer our proud, profound gratitude, given this day, November the 5th, 2019, from the board.
Why don't we get a, you want to get a picture with me?
Yeah.
Why don't we get a picture?
Okay.
Mr. Scott, you want to come up here and get a picture with us?
Mr. Ford? Oh, come on, let's get down.
James, you doing anything?
I'd like to take this opportunity just to point out to Nathan, now those power parachutes they're talking about, that you were kind of reluctant to get, get on one of, back in the mid-eighties, when I was still in special operations and young and stuff, when those things first came in, they were, they were classified. They were used to, for extraction of one or two soldiers if they was behind lines and stuff, they could crank those things up, and they was loud and stuff like that, but we would use those things for just extraction of folks, and, and since the mid-eighties, they kind of got into the sports parachute community, but I want to encourage Nathan to get on one of them.
Well, I'm glad you explained that, because I didn't know what it was, so. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
I would like to say, Mr. Ford is exactly correct. I was lucky enough to bump into two different groups of the alumni, one at a local restaurant, and then later at Walmart, one of the young ladies had had a blowout in her shoe, and she was buying some new shoes out there, but they were super nice people, and I had a great conversation with them, so I'm glad it turned out good. Yep.
Sheriff, I seen your hand go up, did you have something to add? Yes, sir.
We had, we had located the person that, that happened to, from my understanding, it's nothing criminal, it was just, it was just an accident. It was kind of a long story, but he, he went there for a manic, uh, uh, night with his girlfriend, and he had some candles there and so forth, and then he left to pick her up and then come back, and it was on fire, so. What, what I was saying is that it's nothing criminal, but it could be something civil that the, I guess, you know, like actually the gaming commission would probably, you know, I don't know if they want to, you know, do anything about, for, as any type of lawsuit against him or him to pay for, but I'm not sure. But anyway, just to let you know that it has been solved, it just, it just nothing criminal, just, he just kind of carried it, you know, to his romance, a little, little, a little too far with it. And then the, Mr. Scott answered about the, about the Little River. We got some, nothing yet, but we got some real good leads on it. So, I actually talked to one of my investigators today, and, and got some, a couple of names that we're going to be looking at, so hopefully we'll get something to work on, on that one, too.
Did y'all see any of the pictures of that?
Yes.
They, they did a pretty good number on it there.
Yeah, it was disappointing.
Yeah.
Yep.
For anybody that doesn't know, I mean, they're talking about Little River Springs Park, and they had been vandalized one night by some individuals that took spray paint and graffiti and painted the whole place up.
Not just one piece of it, I mean, they went from one side to the other.
Spences, sidewalks, benches, I mean, just disheartening, but we appreciate Mr. Scott and his team.
They, they wasn't going to win those spelling bees, I can tell you that. Even the words were misspelled. But it was horrible.
You know, if he was out there to give her an engagement ring, that's something she'll never forget.
You talking about the dock or the painting?
The dock, either one.
Yeah.
I flipped. I flipped back and forth. All right, thank you, Mr. Scott, thank you, Mr. Ford. Moving on to general business, item 21, discuss with possible board action developers agreement with Speedway, general requirements for controlling access to 129. Mr. Bravat, Mr. Harris, which one of y'all want to take a lead on that?
I'll just make some general comments. When we had the public hearing regarding Speedway's application, we indicated in that public hearing that we were going to be looking at service roads out there and controlled access on 129, and trying to work the details of that out. More importantly, we had stated that it was, that, that property and its development would require a developers agreement. After that hearing, we didn't hear anything from the applicants at all. And in some cases, you get properties approved, and it can be years before they're prepared to move forward and do anything. So, at such point that they finally submitted a preliminary site plan, I guess in this case, they're believing it's their final site plan, we communicated with them that we still don't have a developers agreement put together. And we have spoken to DOT. DOT recognizes and stated clearly that it's going to be our responsibility to manage the development of that property out there, and there's some issues in our comp plan amendment that need to be included. But we have a meeting, I don't know if Mr. Pittman is here tonight, but North Florida Professional Services is going to have a meeting, Mr. Pittman is, with Mr. Bravat and I and DOT this week to talk about part of that. We will be scheduling another meeting with the consultant engineer of that company very soon, but the purpose of having some general discussion this evening is to ensure that we don't get out ahead of the commissioners on this thing, is it your desire to have a service road, to have controlled access, to try to mitigate the traffic problems out there that none of us participated in on the south side of I-10. This is the opportunity that we have, and there won't be a better opportunity than right now. If we don't go ahead and do something now and require a different approach on that side of the interstate, you won't get another opportunity as these properties develop. That's a question.
Absolutely. No, we, I mean, that was pretty much the desire of the board, I believe, at that public hearing we had. We, if we don't get it under control now, you won't go back and undo it once you let it out the bag.
Well, since we had that hearing, though, we also had the report from DOT, and we now know that they do plan to put that traffic light there, well, on both sides of the interstate, at the exit ramps. That impacts the distance and the separation for the next traffic lights headed north in this particular case, and now that we have that information, it's helpful, and that will be a part of the discussion that we have with DOT as we move forward on a plan to, a comprehensive plan for that part of 129.
Mr. Chairman, and like Randy said, in that meeting that we had with them, they made it very clear that would be our responsibility to make those... it very clear that would be our responsibility to make those, you know, implement that. I don't think they have any plans of...
Do they have any timeline on the traffic lights, north and south of the interstate? No?
No, we're going to have to require that in our land development regulation.
He's talking about DOT's the one.
Well, the only traffic light that they're talking about is the one there at the ramps. And that was in that report. It's like four or five years out.
Right.
It's still a ways out.
Twenty-three is the start of it.
Okay, so it's probably three and a half to four years. In any event, the other traffic lights, as you move forward, they, probably the only part that they'll be involved in there is the permitting.
Well, I know when I was attending the meetings over in, at the traffic safety meeting, they was talking about that traffic light would be more of a problem with traffic backing up, back towards Walmart or getting on and off the interstates. But I think the traffic light would be the right solution to do it.
Listen, it works every place else.
Yeah.
You go to every city that there is in America that's got interstates running through it and they've got controlled access and coming off of those ramps because it's an absolute necessity. And it's the same case here.
In some of the early meetings, Clyde, they did say that. But as we've had more meetings with them, the last sketch or drawing that we've seen, it showed traffic lights.
Okay. Ms. Hancock?
Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. Just one quick question. DOT, when, during their presentation, they're going to put some additional lanes in on 129 north there. How far north are they going to go with the additional lanes that they were talking about in 2025, I believe?
I don't have any idea. I mean, we're meeting with the person that is going to be most intimately involved from DOT with that section. And now that we know that there's someone coming in wanting to develop, I think that could affect their plans and how far they go. In my opinion, if that section of four lane was extended north, half a mile, that would be a good place to start. If they want to go farther than that, it'd be even better. Typically, they don't get that far out ahead because of budget limitations. I'd love to see them go at least half a mile north of where that traffic light's going to be at that ramp.
Yeah. If we could get them or talk them into going about a mile further, it would be better, simply because that area is going to develop. When the fire station, if it ever gets, comes to fruition, or when it comes to fruition, that's really going to make the traffic a lot worse. And if we could actually get DOT to speed up and come do it before 2025 and get it moved up, if possible, that would be a great help for that area. And it also helped for future development there.
Yeah, that's true.
But I just did not know, just, you know, because nobody ever said how long then they were proposing to go or how far.
That was a very preliminary sketch that we had. So I don't know that they've actually firmed up that distance yet. But we have been talking to them about minimum spacing on those traffic lights, trying to determine, because I think they need to be quite far apart so that we don't have stacking problems with traffic backing up from light to light.
That was the possibility of the fire station going there, you're going to have to have something there for that.
We're looking at that as well. Part of the conversation.
Yeah.
That's part of it, yes, sir.
Okay. Just checking.
Thanks, sir. Was that all you needed, was the answer to that?
That's all I needed.
All right. Anything else from y'all?
No, sir.
Item 22, discuss with possible board action, safe routes to school, grant application for construction, approximately one mile of sidewalk south of Live Oak, adjacent to 129. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I've spoken with some people from the University of Florida who work on these safe routes to school applications and they've offered their assistance with I wish this was an easier process and I've expressed my frustration with the process previously. This is probably the most complicated, most difficult application process that DOT has. I suggested, when this offer was made, that if they would handle the school, that I don't have time to handle the school and I don't have staff to handle the school and all the meetings and the petition drives and everything that are required for this application, that we may have an interest. There were some other pieces that we have to be responsible for, that I've spoken to these consultants about. But one thing that we needed to do was have a public discussion about it. In fact, I've got a little petition that I wanted to circulate. If everyone in attendance here would just sign this, if you support the idea of us constructing this sidewalk, this sidewalk would go from the South City limit on 129 continuing south down to beyond the Melody School. There's another little private school down there. And I'm sure that all of you have seen the children walking through the grass, that behaia grass with weeds up to their waist after school. It'd be nice to have a sidewalk continue because most of these, or a lot of these, large number of them are walking to the library. So this is a possibility. We may be able to get DOT funding to construct that sidewalk. We've talked about budgeting for it and it would be best if DOT funds it. But in any event, we need your help, everyone in attendance here. If you support the idea of construction of that sidewalk, please sign the petition and it'll become a part of our application. There are petitions that have to go out with all the students, to parents that need to sign. There'll be meetings with the schools, school staff. But this group from the University of Florida has indicated they would take care of that part of it for us. There's a relatively short timeline associated with this application process that we're going to be scrambling to try to get it all put together in time. But that is the plan. And if the board supports the idea, I need for you to go ahead and just vote and say that you support the idea of this application so it's in the record as well and it'll become a part of the application process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, did they contact the school board or you don't know about anything?
These, the private schools, not the school board, the private schools. They have reached out to the private schools. They indicated that to me in an email. They want us to assist them with making the right contacts there, which we can do.
We got somebody wants to speak on that.
Yeah, we did. We reached out.
Okay.
And there's the whole package of information. It's been a little bit of a mess. So there, it's on the radar.
Okay. Well, we're going to be knocking on doors, trying to get whatever we need from those schools to make this a success. Because it really depends on their participation in the petition process and their communicating their desire to have these sidewalks out there.
Mr. Harris?
Mm-hmm.
What school did you say those folks are affiliated with that's going to do the research for us?
University of Florida.
What, say that again?
It's going to be...
The good one.
It is not going to work.
The good one, the good one that's just south of us.
You mean that team that lost?
Talking about the one that you're representing the colors of tonight?
Which one, which one are you talking about? Both of them did.
We won. We fired our coach.
Yeah, that good school south of here is going to help us out with this thing. And we're thankful.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to ask Clyde to refresh my memory. At one of those traffic safety meetings we went to, University of Florida was there, there were some students there and they were talking about doing...
Students from the University of Florida.
What are they, they were going to do a study here on things like that?
They were doing, I think, in February or March.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's something we need to talk about, but they're, that's things they would look at.
Okay. We have communicated with them as well. They've talked to us and they, we've signed everything that they needed and my understanding is that should be underway as well. Is that orange and blue that you're wearing down there?
Not really.
That there really is an orange and blue?
Mr. Harris, he told me he was wearing that in mourning for us.
Yep. I wore the colors in a nice suit. I thought I was coming to a funeral.
My goodness. My, my.
No respect. None.
Wait late on this month.
Later on this month, Mr. Clyde says. They got to get a coach first.
We'll do better without him.
I'd have begged them to fire me, too, for $7 million. I'm going to tell you that right now. Do I have a motion to support this project?
Make a motion.
Motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that all you needed, was just?
Yes, sir.
All right. You got anything at the water plant?
Uh, no, not right now.
Seen them out there working. All right. Item 24, additional agenda items. I'm pretty sure I seen a couple.
We do have a couple of additional agenda items.
Add item number one, additional agenda items, the approval to hold second meeting in November on Monday, May 18th.
Monday, November the 8th?
November. What did I say? May? Monday, May, or Monday, November 18th. 6:00 PM, located Judicial Annex. We got a commissioner, I believe, going to be out of town the rest of the week, so need to move it up. Yes, ma'am, feel free.
Through the chair, Mr. Commissioner, Gabrielle Redfern, 101 White Avenue. I just want to remind the board that we try not to step on each other's meetings and this is a CRA meeting that's been advertised since August.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I don't want to step on her toes, but I always try to honor the request of a board member when they get it to us ahead of time. They know they're going to be out of town, especially when it's work-related. I think he'll be out of town with...
Fact conference.
A fact conference, so that's why it's on the agenda for tonight and just need to know what wishes the board are.
It doesn't happen often. I mean, yeah, so I, go ahead.
I'm in support of it. I mean, if it, it's different if it's a vacation or something, but I mean, he's conducting county business and I just feel like that, like you say, very seldom does it happen. And I want to be a partner with the city and the county all the time, but I mean, this is kind of a special circumstance and I feel like we can, as a board, we, if we have everybody here, it's just better for us.
You have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number two is authors, a request of authorization, county administrator to execute all associated documentation with the lease six Cat Motor Graders Ring Investments LLC in the amount of $158,000 to term lease pending review of the county attorney. Anything else need to add, Mr. Harris?
No, we had gotten the prior approval, but when we went back and looked at the minutes, it didn't reflect that we had gotten the authorization to go ahead and execute the actual agreements when they came in. So we need to go ahead and do that.
Okay, and it is a budgeted item. Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris? Do we, and it doesn't make any difference, but I just, it does make a difference sometimes. Are these...
Orange and blue?
No. Are these steering wheel type or are they joystick type?
I'm pretty sure these are the steering wheels.
Okay.
What happened with that, it was never our idea to go with those joysticks.
Right.
The manufacturer came up with that. But then they later discovered on the resale market, which is what they do with these after they've leased them to us for a couple of years, that in the private sector, they didn't have any interest in buying graders without a steering wheel.
That's right.
So I think now they're all just offering steering wheels because they don't want to have to deal with that problem.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions? I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by them and I have a second.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other items or is this just two?
That's it.
This time we'll open the floor to public comments and concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, throw a mic their way to the podium. Yes, sir.
Robert Ford, 8896 135 Loop, Live Oak, Florida. Just an announcement, on behalf of Commissioner Gamble, who serves on the Veterans Parade Board with me and maybe some others, maybe in the audience, we will have our annual Veterans Day Parade this Monday, November 11th at 9:00 AM. We will line up about 8 o'clock, I mean, about 8:00 AM and we're going to take off promptly at 9:00. So I put some of these flyers on the desk outside. So if you are part of an organization, a business, or whatever, please take a flyer and display it in your organization and try to get the word out and try to get as many people out for this holiday. It's, you know, it's, it's a day that we honor our veterans, so it's a very noble and high calling, so please come out and support the parade.
Thanks, sir.
Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. I'm not trying to labor this. I don't like getting up here. But y'all have approved, in at least the last three budget years, monies for different projects that aren't yet done. Exhibition two, for four years, that money's been sitting there and y'all still haven't done anything. What's going on? Why does it take so long? I mean, you're approving and it's now, like I say, spread over four budget years and it's still not done. Nothing has been done. And there's other projects, excuse me, that y'all have budgeted for in multiple years. Nothing's happening. And, you know, out here, we're, we listen to y'all pass these budgets. What are you doing with the money? I mean, it keeps rolling over, I guess, but nothing. Why do it if you're not going to do it? Just a question.
I can answer part of that.
It just boils down to time and priorities. The money's there, the money does roll over, but I'll let you answer the rest of it.
Well, part of it is not budgeting enough money, where we've got a budget for multiple years in order to have enough money. Like Exhibition two is a good example. I think we had $50,000 there. You're not going to do much with $50,000 and we knew that, but we kept rolling that forward hoping that we could eventually put some more with it. In other cases, like out at the administration building last year, we had budgeted for that. We took the money away because we had a greater priority once the supervisor elections agreed to move to Mizel Building. We had not budgeted enough for that because originally we were just going to use that for storage. So we had budgeted for storage, but it took a lot more money. So as a priority, we took it out of administration, moved it over to use it for Mizel. And that's not a unique situation. I think we took, we reduced the money for this building this year to do some other things as well. And we had budgeted for a couple of years for this, but we just had other issues rolling forward that were more important. So we'll eventually get them all done. But we budget for them. If we can't get them done as a pri, if we've got a higher priority, that's what we're going to do and eventually get them taken care of.
I'd say that's, that's most of it, is just prioritizing. I mean, we want to put a cosmetic look on the outside of this building, but when something came up more important than budget workshop, then we'll just let it keep looking like a hay barn.
And like you said, having enough money to complete the project. That's the biggest part. I mean, the money definitely isn't going anywhere, like I say.
Well, come August and the next budget workshops, why don't y'all give that a little more attention, do a little better planning job, perhaps?
Well, there wasn't enough money to go around this year, so I mean, you don't want to, once you know you've got a project you want to do, you have it planned to do it. If you don't want to take away that money that you've got sitting there, but you might not have enough to add to this year, and that was kind of the situation. And there was a couple of them that we pulled from this year to make other projects that come to fruition.
Now, hopefully y'all are going to be looking a little closer at the budget. Let's get some of these things done. Don't keep bringing it up year after year after year and, you know, nothing seems to move forward. Other things keep jumping in. So I don't know whether it's a planning situation, lack of money, or combinations thereof, several other factors. I don't know.
Mr. Hancock, we just love to hear from you. If we do all these projects, you won't have anything to come in here and talk to us about.
Hey.
I did think of another one, though. I did think of another one that, which we had not budgeted for. That was the demolition. And all this happened last year as well. We started the Mizel, we did the demolition of the Douglas Center, and that was another expense that we had not originally budgeted for, so.
Things come up throughout the year where you have to move money around and prioritize and, you know, a bad plan is better than no plan.
I think, I think we're doing a good job with working with the money that we have, but I appreciate you asking the question because you don't know without asking, especially with some of these things that's going... especially with some of these things that's going on, I mean, the money's there, though, and it's going to good projects now. Some of it may not be clear as it should be for the person sitting there sometimes, I understand that. I mean, another prime example is the sidewalk we're talking about. We, we don't have any money to do that sidewalk and we're trying to get money to get it done, but we budgeted some money, 60,000 or so this year. If we'd get down three or four years and we can't get the money to do it, then hopefully we have enough money there grouped up to, to make it happen, so we'll, you know. I mean, that's just another example of something you don't wanna hear, but I appreciate your concern, Mr. Hancock.
I just, you know, just, to me, it is, comes up, I come to the budget hearings and it's, it's the same thing, money keeps rolling forward and nothing gets done.
Well, I don't, I disagree that nothing gets done, a lot gets done.
Well.
We do a lot, and that may not be on a project that we had listed, it may, our project planning changes. And, and these positions, they, you have to be able to be flexible, which is what we've done. With the construction of the Mizel Building and moving the supervisor elections, that's gonna free up the upstairs of the old administration building that we can then turn into offices. It also frees up the current supervisor elections office, which, when I did the evaluation seven years ago for the capital improvement plan, we knew that the tax collector needed storage and part of that building can become the tax collector's storage right across the street, so we knew that at the time, but the building wasn't available. So, by making a decision to move on the Mizel Building, then she needed to be in or try to be in before the beginning of next year, that entire timeline changed to accommodate the supervisor elections. Although it impacts all those other buildings, which is gonna be a huge plus to us. So, no, we didn't do the administration building, maybe we didn't do Exhibition two, but we're getting some things done that were already in the capital improvement plan that needed to be done. We just had to move them forward at a much faster pace.
And, and one other quick thing, and this is more for you, Randy. During administrator comments, keep us posted or updated a little bit on some of this, instead of me having to. It's fine if I come up and ask you the questions, I get an answer.
The problem is I work with these things every day and I don't think about them as new. In my mind, they're, they're just rolling forward and I've got a thousand things going on every day, so I don't think of them as an update. But, I guess in many cases they are, an update to the public.
Well, I come up and ask you all kind of questions. But everybody else might wanna hear too.
I understand.
I don't talk to everybody else. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hear none, all right, we'll go to administrator comments.
I don't have anything to say, Mr. Harris.
You don't say anything else.
All right, board members' comments requests, got anything for us, Mr. Fleming?
Uh, I have a few things, I, I would like to say to, um, all the individuals, all the constituents that come out to, to the board meeting, can you hear me out there pretty good? They come to the meeting, glad to see you. I thought, I kinda thought about this today, um, and I did tell Randy. As I traveled around the county and the city, I see how things are done and, and I told them tonight, really appreciate you being around here. And so happened, Mr. Hancock was talking about some thing that been, that's been completed, not completed. We know that the state's attorney office was one project that has enhanced this area. I had the opportunity to go into the Mizel Building and those, those, that building, I don't know, know whether you've been in there or not, but they have done a, a tremendous job in that building. And as I go around the county, I look at the workers, how they work, I see that they're, they're doing a good job keeping this county looking good, um. I got a call from one of my constituents and I called Randy and, and he jumped right on it to, to get that road fixed out there. I think, uh, our department here is, and I think that our county administrator do a good job. I don't have to think, I know they do a good job.
Thank you.
You know, being sitting up here on this board for nine years, over nine years now, um, I'm beginning to learn a, a lot of stuff, I, I've seen a lot of changes, I've, I've, I've saw a lot of things how it happens. And, as you said earlier, you know, when you come on the commission, you think, oh, I can get this done, I can get that done, but it's a process. It's a working process, um, you find out that some things that you can get accomplished, some things that won't get accomplished right at, at, you know, at time that you think that it will, but it, but it happens. And I think it happens for the, for the best. I look at our commission tonight, um, thank you for the approval, changing the meeting. I will be attending that conference down in Fort Lauderdale and I think that is, it's a wordy thing, it's, maybe all of us can't go at the same time, but perhaps one can attend at some time. I've, I've, I've been to everyone and everyone have been, been a, a great success. And I look forward to going, uh, going in a couple of weeks and maybe I can bring some information back. The last thing I wanna say tonight is, uh, my, my 40 years of being married tonight, today. Told my wife I'd take her to, uh, Hardest for lunch.
Big spender.
You, so you got married on my birthday?
Today's your birthday? Well, happy birthday.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
So you've been married as long as I've been alive.
That's right. I, I told her, I said, if she did good, I would take her to, uh, Hardest or Burger King. But today, we, we were out working. Of course, you know, we, we kinda bought her some property and, uh, we've been out doing some things and trying to get some things completed. She worked real hard. We gonna try to have a little celebration because some things that we were trying to get done, we didn't, didn't get it done and, uh, but I thought she was gonna come tonight, I was gonna surprise and take her, take her full hamburger or something like that. I think she probably have something ready for me when I get to the house tonight. So, um, I'd like to congratulate myself. Forty years, now those forty years hadn't been all good now.
I tell ya.
I can tell you. All those forty years haven't been good. But they sure haven't been bad either.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're gonna take a little money up and I want you, when you go home, I want you to have a card and some flowers with you. Don't walk in that door empty-handed.
I think we can all pitch in for that.
Well, I, I appreciate it, but, uh, thank you. So I, I've, I've learned a lot in, in the nine years and I sure have learned a lot in the 40 years. So, um, I, 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 I look forward to, to getting to the house, I may have something, maybe she got something surprise for me tonight. But I've been giving her for those years and maybe I received something tonight.
He ain't learned enough, he ain't got flowers to go on, does he?
So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. You wanna dig a hole in that end too?
I don't know how to follow that. I, I, I will say I agree with Mr. Fleming, our, our staff does well and, and Mr. Bo, I know you, you brought up some great questions tonight, but those people that work for the county, they are hard at work every day, I promise you. So, it doesn't seem like it sometimes, but it is. And with that being said, I know you've asked before about, um, the, uh, River Task Force and I haven't really had a lot to say about it because we hadn't had any meetings lately, we've been waiting on the city of Adosta. But we did have a meeting a couple of months ago, call me a couple of weeks ago. They still have not got the grant, the, the permission to do the other holding tank. They're still waiting on the paperwork to come through from the state of Georgia. But, I think they took a Randy Harris approach to this. They knew where the hole needed to be and how big it needed to be, so they started digging anyway and they call it a training session. So, yeah, so they're, they're digging the hole ahead of having the permit and, and they call it for training, so. But I've asked the city manager and the city engineer, I'm hoping they'll respond to be at our next board meeting to show, uh, a little slide they have of what's currently out there, what they've got accomplished and where they're seeing theirself in the next five to 10 years. So hopefully we can make that happen for the public's knowledge and, um, just wanted to share it out with everybody. Also, we had the Branford Parade last week, that was great, went down there and seen all those folks. Just can't say enough about them, they're good people down there as well, so. And that's really all I got, other than I do feel sorry for the Gator fans out here tonight, I mean, now you know how we feel. I would like to say one other thing, uh, it's, it's crazy, you don't know what people have going on in their lives. I know each and every one of you guys have challenges every day and hurdles, uh, but it's just, it, it's been crazy. I tell you, I've had, you know, some deaths in the family, we've had a couple, an aunt and a cousin that have both had head-on collisions in the last three weeks. So things are just crazy, so, uh, just keep them in your prayers and, and we'll keep you guys in our prayers as well.
Amen.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Stapleton?
I just wanna share something with y'all real quick. Being a new kid on the block up here, and I know we got some people out there running for office. So, the sheriff comes up and gives us a report on that burnt dock of that romantic evening. Commissioner Hale leans over and asks me, should I ask the sheriff if that was a Stapleton boy? Just no respect when you're, when you're the new kid. But, uh, in all seriousness, uh, Mr. Ford, I appreciate you and what you do for this community, I appreciate you reaching out to Mr. Scott and all the efforts they put in. I noticed last year's been a little struggle and, and it's just things like this where you're able to, to reach out and build bridges and we'll move forward as a community, as one, and the Douglas Center will be a wonderful place once we get the funds to, to, uh, complete what we got planned for it and, and we just appreciate, I appreciate your, your, uh, being involved and and helping us build that bridge back. Only other thing I got with, uh, like Mr. Ford said about Veterans Day and we got the parade and we all plan on being in that.
Be there.
Uh, the Elks Lodge has a dinner for the veterans that day and also there's a ceremony at the Live Oak Cemetery that, uh, is really very touching if you haven't seen it before, it's, uh, it's very special. Speaking of that, I was, actually had a little project going down in Branford and I was down there today, and if you haven't been down there, it's just, uh, boy, that's something to see. All those flags they have lined up through town there, it's, uh, it's touching. That's all I got.
Did, I have one question, did you ever find your golf cart?
Yeah, I found it, it was, uh, I think it's, I got it on the sheriff's department and they helped me locate it.
Okay.
We went to the parade in Branford and, and, uh, we, we finished the parade, the commissioners, and we went and parked and went inside. We put the golf cart back on my trailer and went inside to eat, well, when we come out, the golf cart was gone. We just had a trailer and a truck. And, uh, we got looking around and we found it off in the woods there. But, only thing I, only thing I know, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody, sheriff, but, uh, there was some, there was some sheriff's department people in, inside there that, uh, might've been up for no good, they left right before us. I appreciate that.
Good.
But the moral of the story is don't leave your key in the golf cart.
That's the moral of the story.
We're good.
All right, thanks, sir. Uh, only thing I have is, I was, town of Branford, city of Live Oak, both of them did, uh, two separate candy carnivals or trick-or-treat nights and everybody come together, it was just two wonderful nights. You had Branford Homecoming this past week, um, parade, y'all all attended and, um, it was a good parade, it was a, even better football game. Branford put a whooping on them, at least at halftime, I left at halftime, it was 20-something to nothing.
Good deal.
And I, and then McAlpin, uh, Community Center had come out, McAlpin Ag Days Saturday, so a lot of community projects going on, events and, uh, just like to see, every, this time of year, everybody starts coming together and putting things aside and, and, and reaching out for the community, so it was a goo, it was a good week. And I just wanna tell everybody thank you for what they did.
Speaking of that, I just wanted, I meant to tell Ms. Redfern, we appreciate you, what you done for that candy carnival, I mean, it was, uh, it was a great night and it's, I know it's stressful and you're running around there and trying to keep everybody happy and keep the program going, but, uh, we, we saw what you did and we appreciate you for that and.
I'm impressed that y'all had enough candy all night long. The rain did help, but, I don't know, what was that, uh?
There was a lot of people there, that was.
A lot.
Really a great showing, it really was.
Was that a 200 gallon trough y'all had out there? I know, but y'all had it in a water trough and it was filled to the top and it, I don't know, 200 gallon, 250 gallon? And they filled it twice.
Yeah, it was pickup truck load.
Yeah, I don't have anything else unless y'all do.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say, concerning Mr. Ford, uh, I did speak with him to, to let him know that on the, that, on that alumni association when they had the, the, uh, alumni party. I did get a chance to see all the pictures, which you knew I was going, going south and, uh, I saw the pictures and I think the pictures were, I saw some people that I knew from way back and had the opportunity to look over those pictures and think it was real nice and, uh, maybe at the next one I'll be able to attend.
If no one has anything else, just.
Yeah, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, while we're on the subject of, if, uh, everybody, help me real quick, we can start off with. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ricky. Happy birthday to you.
Well, thank y'all, that's twice today, I've had TDC meeting and a board meeting, y'all made me turn red twice. But they got cake at the TDC meeting, they have all the cake. Y'all slack.
You can go with Clyde and get a burger.
I think I got a surprise because she was trying to rush me out the house.
You ain't got no flowers, I know you got a surprise.
If you bring Ricky on with you, it would be a surprise.
He gonna need two houses.
I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.